I'd like to thank everybody for coming this morning. If you joined us for a short prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings you bestow upon us. Dear Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to be here this morning to lead the county. We pray, dear Lord, that the decisions we make would be the best for the most people in the county. Lord, we ask that you lay your hand upon our law enforcement officers and help keep them safe. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen. We declare this meeting open if you'll join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming this morning. We do have a pretty lengthy agenda. We'll move through it here just as quick as we can. First on the agenda this morning is the Commissioner Board appointments. We have none that I know of this morning. The next will be economic development. Bring in Gerald.
How about the minutes?
Good morning.
Oh, I'm sorry. We'll do that. Go ahead. No, you go ahead and then we'll take care of it.
Just want you guys to know today's my birthday, so.
Well, happy birthday.
So honored, yeah. Twenty-one. Okay.
I was going to be nice to you, and then you had to come down and lie like that.
I know. Okay, so I just have a couple of things. I went to the Midstates Corridor update, which wasn't much of an update, just telling us that there are four segments that need to be, they need to have a Tier Two study. The Tier One study will be done at the end of this month. And then the Tier Two studies take about two to three years, so we're still, we're still quite a ways out. And the biggest one is how they're going to navigate around the COVID. But still Route P, so that's, that's one definite that we know about, so.
That's good news.
Yeah, yeah, so they're moving right along, just like the CC nine, right? Okay, and then we wrapped up our South Line Central Ag Development Strategy, and right now we're working on our action steps. We're increasing the value-added processing for ag products, and that can be meatpacking facilities for beef and chicken, soybean crushing facilities, increase refrigerator warehousing, and we're looking at existing buildings, which I didn't have an inventory for existing buildings that would be appropriate for refrigeration. But I just wanted you guys to know that we're still working along. We have, you know, timelines for each action step, and we went through that last week to determine who is going to be working on what. But I think it's, there's 32 counties that are involved in this strategy, so it's quite a huge undertaking. But anyway, and of course, we're pursuing all targeted marketing or progress point, continuing to work on that. So I think this month, we've got some developers coming to Redevelopment Commission to propose some ideas and plans for that, so. Any questions for me?
Oh, I happened to be down at Scotland area last week and went by One Hager's Project down there, and it is, it is quite impressive. I mean, everything looks nice and it's moving right along, and there's a lot more, it's, it's growing quickly, I'll put it that way. It really looks nice.
It's attractive, and I was talking, I had lunch yesterday with the new school superintendent from Bloomfield, Scott Vanderre, and then David Dean, and we were talking about that development, and I was like, and if any of those citizens have children, let's get them up into our school districts instead of Davey's.
I understand.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Now we'll back up before I get all excited and get in a hurry. The minutes of our last meeting, this circulated among the Commissioners, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make that a motion.
Second. We also have a claims docket that's been circulated amongst the Commissioners, I'd entertain a motion to approve the claims.
I'll also make that a motion.
Second. And we also have a payroll docket that's been circulated, I'd entertain a motion to approve the payroll.
And I'll make that a motion.
Second. Now we'll get back to our regularly scheduled program. Next on our agenda, we have Resolution 2023-08, the Public Health Financing Plan. We discussed this a little bit at our last meeting and tabled it until today. Don't see Sherry here. Any questions, comments about the resolution?
I do not have any.
I'd entertain a motion that we approve the Resolution 23, 2023-08. So, babe?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we also have an Ordinance 2023-01, which is the Green County Local Health Services Fund. This is a fund that we have to establish by ordinance to, in order to receive the state's core health services monies. Marvin, do you have anything you want to add about that, or?
Just that it's a statutory requirement to create the account, and that the State Board of Accounts has already updated its county chart of accounts and has assigned this renumbered 1161 fund to 1161, and so the ordinance makes clear that the account's being created and that it's coming in as fund 1161.
Any questions? I don't have any. I'd entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 2023-01.
I'll make that a motion.
Second. All in favor? Next, we have the HiCom contract for the security camera system upgrade. We looked at this several meetings ago from courthouse security, brought us the information with the updates along with the price, and this is just getting the contract finalized with HiCom. I'd entertain a motion to approve that contract. So, babe?
Second.
All in favor? Next is the AppCo contract. This is the medical dispatch training. We talked about this also a couple of meetings ago. I would entertain a motion to approve that contract.
I'll make that a motion. I think it's very important.
Second. All in favor? Next, we have Randall Brown. Arpa questions?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I come as a member of the council. I came today for the purpose of this meeting is to, uh, threefold. Number one, express a concern from the council about the current status of the ARPA fund. We started inquiring a couple of meetings ago about the balance, about where we are with what's left, how much has been appropriated of the appropriations, how much has been spent out of those appropriations, and wanted to get a real good feel for that accuracy. In doing that, I also went to the auditor's office to glean some information, and we have started down that path to try to get a real good idea of where we're at with the ARPA fund. Second piece is to ask for a joint meeting. One member from this group and no more than three members from our group to sit down, go over that, once we get that information, go through it, look at the Tenth Amendment, go back over all the appropriations, ascertain, has the money been distributed? Is the money ever going to be distributed? There's a couple of appropriations from the very beginning that looks like that money may still be out there hanging in the balance. When, uh, the other day, we, we got some information, and Marvin, thank you for your work on this, that brought forth that we had approximately 1.7 million left in appropriation, and that being there was an ask for 1.2. It was tabled. And so that would leave about 500,000 roughly left in the fund. But the checking account has 4.7 million. This checking account also is gaining interest. We need to also determine, just taxatorily, whether that interest stays in the ARPA fund or whether it goes in the general fund. I've not been able to get to the bottom of that yet. I know there are some funds that interest has to stay in the fund. I've learned like blight of property and things, but a lot of times, interest on our balances go to the general fund. So that's another piece. So with all that said, the joint meeting, go over the Tenth Amendment, and then two more pieces of that meeting, we get an idea then of where you're headed with the rest of it. We're down to the, we're really down to the last bit and what your plans are, and I know you've got, one Commissioner said, a long laundry list. That's okay. It's your money, and go on down the road. And then the last, third, and final item, I've been told that two years ago, the council was given an opportunity to say whether they had any pet projects or had any desires to use some of this money. I apologize, no, I'm not going to apologize. I stink that I wasn't here two years ago. I was newly elected this January. I would like one more opportunity to come to you and talk about maybe use of some of this money in that meeting. Not in a public meeting, not at our meeting, but that let's discuss it back and forth. I've got an idea, um, there's, there's a plan for it. It's not something stretched way out there in the future, and again, it's just an idea. It's just a conversation. So the purpose is to here is, is, is that simple. To express our concern, please have a meeting together, and let's get to the bottom of it and see where it's at, and see where we're going in, in with the rest of this, and next year, we'll wrap this thing up. And the very last thing I put on here, thank you. Thank you for what you've done so far. I mean, you guys have done great work. We have brand-new county roads. We're getting, we're in the process of getting a new EMS facility, which is badly needed. We have used it for our individuals that work here, that breadwears and payroll, and given them some benefit during this COVID process, so thank you for every bit of that. Not here as a someone who is going to come by directly or anything like that, it's not my job, but I belong to the fiscal body, and the fiscal body should have a really good idea of where we stand fiscally with regard to any monies in the county. And that's the only reason I'm here today, is to try to find a place here where we can come and go through this and say, okay, where are? I don't, I don't know if you know that. If you do, it'd be a pretty short meeting. If not, we're going to have to get together with the auditor, who, I remind all of us, is new in the job as well, and is trying to learn, go back a couple of years and figure out the appropriations that were made, what's been taken out against them and so forth. And Marvin, as the county attorney, has been very helpful as well, tracking appropriations, but, uh, I mean, it, it's not that complex. I know we're headed into budget season, but this is a very small fund comparatively. This is not 800 and some page budgetary status of the county. This is a pretty small fund, and I think we can get to the bottom of it, and I'd like to see us do that prior to the 21st, which is our meeting, so that we can then get back on schedule for you to do what you need to do with the EMS project. That's all I have. Any questions?
First thing, I'd like to thank you for coming to this meeting. It's the first time in years that we've seen a council member at a Commissioners' meeting, and it's, it's very good to see. I can answer one of your questions. The interest on that ARPA fund does go to the general fund. That is, that is in the original plan from.
In the original ARPA legislature?
Yes, in the, in the plan from the Treasury Department. That is our, that, that can go to the general fund. And that's part of the reason that we have Marvin Thornburg hired to take care of that kind of stuff, to give us up-to-date on that. And as far as some of the appropriations, what's left over there, I guess, I'm sure you're aware that those can't be, those, some of those can't be paid until we receive whatever item that, like the generator for the.
Sure, sure, sure. The highway, the highway garage, we have set aside there, so we have marked for some new trucks. I understand all that, but we've got some, and again, I'd like to do it in a different meeting where we can really get down to it and look at it and say, yes, I do understand one crossings grant has been paid out already.
Yes.
And it looks like it came in under appropriation.
Yes.
So that's going to give us a little breathing room there. The, uh, the, the first two appropriations are the ones that are probably most concerning for me. 750 and 850, that's 1.6 million. It doesn't look like we made one draw against those balances, that they were made in response to what appeared to be statutory requirements back then, and then whether or not we need to revisit that.
That, of course, and as you know, that plan has changed, uh, I wouldn't say changed, it's evolved.
Yes, yeah.
Quite a bit since we first received the money. It was, it was extremely restrictive whenever, when we first received, received it, and that's the reason that some of the language in the plan is the way that it is.
Understood.
So that's kind of, that's kind of a little background on that.
I think we could get really to the bottom of all of it, hopefully in one meet with a little bit of pre-work. I volunteered to do the pre-work and get the, get the budgetary statuses together, maybe some of the bank documents, look at, we'll get a real good idea of what the interest is, and then, you know, if it, if it does belong to the general fund, how do we get it moved? You know, appropriate it over there or something, or transfer or whatever, and get to, get a, get on with the budgetary problem issue of the county.
Yeah, and the Treasurer can let you, can, she can tell you what's in that, what the interest is there. I mean, that's, that's easy. That's easy, so. You guys got anything?
No, I'm not, I'm not opposed to sitting down and, I think we have a pretty good feel, but we probably have a different feel than what you, you being the council have of what's left and what's not left. I'd be all for sitting down.
You're not suggesting that we have a joint Commissioner-Council meeting?
No. No quorum of either group. Just a coordination meeting between, which means that's one of you and less than three of us. Three or less than us. To go over a few things and look at it and say, hey, this, this what we got, and this what we think, and otherwise, we've got, you know, open door and sunshine law and all of those stuff.
And we're fine with that. I mean, we've been upfront about what we're doing with the money anyhow, so I mean, that's not.
So you can get back to me on it?
Would, uh, would you like to take part in that meeting to give the Commissioner's standpoint?
I can, if that's what you want to do. How are you going to do it?
I think you've got a good grasp on this, as have any of us.
Yeah, are you thinking that you're going to have to wait till after the next council meeting?
No, no.
The council members? How are you going to, the council members are going to be involved in this?
Well, I think that we've talked amongst ourselves, and there's at least three of us, there's at least four of us that have an interest. I think Kelly, obviously the president, she was going to be out of pocket for this next several weeks. But if she can join us by Zoom or video or conference call, then we'll do that. If not, myself, I have an ask Ron, I have an ask Karen, they're both here. I'm sure they both have an interest, if either one of them would be part of the group as well. I don't imagine that, I haven't seen interest from the other council members. I can't say whether they want to be or not.
Okay. We just wouldn't want to do anything that would offend.
Everybody can get an opportunity by email to say, hey, if you want in, I'll step out, you can jump in.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I'm willing to meet with any of the council members anytime.
Okay.
I'd really like to do that before the next Commissioner meeting, so in the next two weeks.
Okay. Yeah, I think we would too.
So would you be the person I need to contact? Will you contact the council members and find out?
I asked Kelly, I asked Kelly if she wanted to be. She said I was, she was fine with me being.
Okay. So I just need to schedule with you then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's talk about time, and then I'll get whoever else wants to be there, and we'll sit down. And like I said, we're going to have to pull in some documents from the auditor's office and, and Treasurer, and look at it and get a real good feel, and then I think both of us then will be well served by that because you'll know pretty much. And then we may come to find out that, hey, some of this that was early appropriated, we may have to go back and do something, something else, but it may never be spent.
We're going to spend it.
Well, I know that. But maybe on, on that, whatever that was. Okay? Any other questions?
No.
I appreciate you letting me be here today, and again, thank you for, you know, things so far.
Yeah, we won't work with councils. This is great.
Thank you for coming, Randall. We do, we do appreciate it. Next on the agenda is Ron Lehman. Arpa questions?
Well, you're seeing me, I appreciate it. Good morning. The only thing I have to, I have to reiterate what Randall said about meeting with you guys and working together and talking over. I mean, nobody from the council is actually coming to these meetings. When I first started, I come into meetings, I was discussing with Karen. I wasn't getting much out of them because I was a junior councilman then, it was my first year, and I didn't know mostly what I was listening to, to be truthful, too. Now I have a little bit better understanding of what's going on, but when I come here today, I'm not proposing anything, but I would like a chance to discuss something about the ARPA fund and the Commissioner's insurance fund. If we could replace some of the insurance fund with ARPA and free up an amount from your fund, keep it in your fund, and maybe use it in this joint venture of speaking with how to use it in a later date, because that can be done, as far as I know, you can use ARPA funds to pay health insurance.
I don't know if this is the appropriate time to talk about that, but I'm going to anyway.
Okay.
I could say I would. We kind of feel like, and we've talked about this, we kind of feel like that those ARPA funds are, well, like the, like the name implies, that they're a rescue plan. The Commissioner's philosophy on that is, we need to spend that money on things that we would not be able to do without the funds. You know, we're going to have to pay our health insurance every year. If we take and spend ARPA money on health insurance, it's gone in one year versus like what we're trying to do with the EMS facility. It's an investment, you know, it's a 30-year investment versus a one year. I mean, that's, that's just our thoughts.
Well, my thought would be pay it a place like, if you paid out $500,000 for health insurance with ARPA, you could take that 500,000 and use it for future permanent things. If you had a consortium of people agreeing to where it would be something that would last. I had a couple of ideas that I don't know if we'll bring up in a public meeting in case it wouldn't work out at all. But it would be permanent, and it'd be for the county.
I, it is just, I mean, and just my way of thinking is, that's just beating around the bush to get to the same place we're going to wind up being at anyhow, so let's just get it over with to begin with. And not, I mean, you know what I'm saying? From what you're presenting here today, it, I mean, that's the, that's the appearance I have. If we're going to do the same thing, you know, if we're going to wind up doing the same thing, let's just do it now and have it done with. Because as we all know, anything we put off is going to cost us more money in the future than what it's going to be to do it right now. So I mean, that's just, that's just our thinking. We've discussed this.
You've got some ideas that you'd like to use for the fund?
I do, yeah.
So will you, will you be available to meet with Randall and I?
Yeah.
You'll share with Randall or something?
Yeah, I think Randall's got some ideas as well, and I mean, there's a few of us that maybe would like to some, but open and talk. If it's not going to work, it's not going to work. I realize that, and it is an ARPA fund, and like you say, it's a rescue fund, it's to help replace a loss that we had during this pandemic, and I want to say it's fair and responsible as well as you did, and I know you are, and I think you guys are doing a fantastic job with what you're doing so far. I had thought we had a little more time, and I don't want to add to that.
If the council's got ideas about needs in the county, we'd like to know about them, irregardless of the ARPA funds. So we'll try and help find financing for whatever it is that you think that we need, so.
Right, and that's.
We need your help to set priorities.
We need to sit together and speak more to each other. I don't think we do that enough.
I agree.
I agree. A hundred percent.
I've said it before, I'd like to work with you guys more and communicate more efficiently in the future, and I still would like to do that. It could still be more meaningful, and something I'd like to see.
I agree, I, I agree too, and I mean, I think this is, here today, this is a valuable step forward, is to have council members at the Commissioners' meetings. I just, it gives you guys a little better idea about what we're doing, and, and we can act, give you your input. I mean, I, we've got a portion of the agenda set up for elected officials and department head comments every meeting, so you don't even have to be on the agenda. All you have to do is come and talk to us. We're glad to have you.
Well, I appreciate it. Any more questions?
I'm good.
No, I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. County Attorney.
I have one thing for you this morning, administrative related to expenditure of ARPA funds, and that is your consideration and approval of the form of the installment promissory note that the hospital board president and secretary will be asked to sign to bind the hospital to repay the $350,000 loan being made from ARPA funds to finance a replacement chiller for the hospital. And I've circulated that note among you. This has been worked out up to this point between me and the hospital's General Counsel. My understanding is that the administration, I believe, has approved of the note. Of course, the hospital board must approve as well, and I anticipate that happening hopefully at their next meeting, and then we can write a check.
Everybody's seen that, so. I'd entertain a motion that we approve the promissory note with Green County General Hospital. So, babe? All in favor?
That is the only thing I have this morning. We've covered everything else except that.
Thank you, Marvin. Elected officials or department head comments. Morning, Sheriff.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, just kind of give you an idea of a couple of things going on. In regards to the heating boiler, S and R Mechanical did determine that that part was not under warranty. The heat exchanger is, but the burner is not, so the costs, I think I've shared that with you guys, would stand at that, so if you're in agreement, I will get that tomorrow, where he could get working on a contract. We'd like to get it repaired before we need to eat, obviously, and I, in today's world, we never know how long it's going to take to get these parts, unfortunately. That was one of the things, and as everybody's well aware, about two weeks ago, we had officers from our department involved in police action shooting. Part of that caused a lengthy investigation by the Indiana State Police, which is going really well. Everything's above a policy procedure. One of the steps that I took, and it's in our policy and procedure, that I may mandate a blood and alcohol test for anybody involved, which I have no concerns, but I explained to my, my deputy, you know, we give people good advice all the time, and sometimes we would recommend they get this if there's any appendix of a liver I'll issue you want to repair. He elected to do that, so I take him to Green County General. He elected to do that, so I took him to Green County General. And when I got there, nothing against the hospital, but their protocol, and I don't work in the medical field. He got the end of the day, I was contacted to repack, he had a husband, apparently the ambulance service already has this, but they're interested in us doing an occupational health contract where I could just go in and get drug screens done. For some reason, we never had that with the hospital, so it does some, I, I feel like we should. It would be another contract, so that's kind of what spurred that on. I would like to have Marvin look at the paperwork and if you're in agreement, it would most likely take your signature. There's a couple of things that I'm working on.
We have one with EMS in the hospital, is that...
That's what I was told, Commissioner Graves, that the ambulance service has had one for years and for whatever reason, the sheriff's department never did. And it mainly evolves around us just walking in. They gave us a schedule of fees for any type of drug test that we needed for an employee, all of that. But we've just never had it with our local hospital. I don't really know why. It took a, a good hour and a half to get a five-minute job because we didn't have that contract. And I'm sure we're going to pay more for that testing.
How do you, how do you drug screen your applicants now? How does that work? Where does that go to?
We just use a independent agency and this would be much more affordable for us to have that contract.
Well, that's what I was thinking. Well, why wouldn't the whole county have a contract with, it's to all county employees? Instead of just, yeah, the sheriff and the EMS, why wouldn't we just have a county-wide contract with the hospital to do our drug screening? Well, we'll talk to the press and the hospital board about that and see if we can. See if we can get something done.
We have to get a physical done and that's part of their physical typically for the deputy. But, you know, and thank goodness we don't have these incidents every day, but just a better county umbrella would be the simplest.
Yeah. Would you want to start that process with the hospital about, see, see what we can do?
Sounds like the sheriff may have something already, so I'd be happy to look at it and go over there.
Yeah, we'd like to make that county-wide. I mean, it would be big for the health, for the highway department too.
Yes.
And I think anybody that operates a vehicle of any kind would be subject to possible drug tests at some point in time.
Yeah, I think I did, George.
Yeah, I think it'd be great.
Interrupt here, commissioners. We tried that with the city of Linton probably about seven years ago and we're just, they weren't interested in that. Because we're the same way to use the independence, just like the highway department and all that, doesn't it? Just like the other day, we had to work with Compton, again, turn things an hour and a half before we get, get the drug test done.
We need to work on that.
Yeah. Give me, give me a little bit, a couple of weeks here and then re-approach them to...
Yeah, they do have, because we checked in a couple of times and we had that in our hospitals.
We can say, give me, give me a couple of weeks to work on that and we'll see if we can't remedy that situation.
If you have a bloodborne pathogen situation, where do you go for tests now?
Typically, it's an ER visit, so that follows under a different protocol, a POV ER. It's usually much more involved. If we have a needle stick, we've had those in the past because there's follow-up and that does come under workman's comp, so it's a little different protocol. And we, unfortunately, we've had those as well. Appreciate your time.
Thanks, George. We need a motion for the S and R boiler repair.
I'd be glad to make that motion. That's, I've got a motion.
Or do we need to see their, you haven't given the contract or anything to...
I just, I have a estimate, Commissioner Graves, I'm just...
I think that's all.
I thought I had it on.
I probably already have it on.
I think that's fine, authorize that and use Cubecap money. So I would, I have a motion. Excuse me, I have a second, second. All in favor? Yeah, go ahead and get it done. And whether that would be CCD money that will pay for that.
Can I get one back to you?
It's an original.
Because I can't remember the number. Okay. I thought, well, I think we were waiting to see if there was any warranty.
Right.
Was my best recollection and I did, that was the main thing. I got that answer. Heat exchanger is under warranty with the county, so.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Do we have any other elected official or department heads this morning? Good morning, Sherri.
Good morning. I just wanted to come and thank you guys for the resolution and the ordinance this morning. Also, I just wanted to let you know the health fair was a great success. We vaccinated 73 kids during the health fair.
How many?
Seventy-three. Seventy-three children. And with that, looking at our county's statistics regarding immunization and childhood immunization, we are now at the 86% mark for Gray County, which is amazing. Two years ago, they were at 56%. So we are really picked up on making sure that kids have their required vaccinations done. And with you guys opting in, that'll go a long way to continue the health in the county. Thank you.
Thank you and thank your staff. I mean, that's, I know they probably don't get the recognition that they deserve and they probably take a little bit more abuse than what they deserve, so, but please extend our thanks to them.
I will, thank you.
Thank you. Have any other elected officials or department head comments this morning? Do we have any public comments this morning?
National night out is tonight over at Twin Park.
For discussion items this morning, I have the land bank, land bank board appointments. Yes, we, we need five. They say five to seven, but five's what I'd like to have is appointments and they're called the prior, there's to set the priorities of the blighted properties that we're going to tackle here in the county. I, I've got some people, I think, for the western part of the county. What I really need is some help with, I need to find somebody in the Bloomfield area and then someone in the eastern part of the county. So if I could find two people or if I could find two volunteers that would like to volunteer to be on this board, that would be fantastic. So I don't know whether, if they'd contact you or they'd contact me, that would, that would be good. I'd like to have those for the next couple of weeks if I could, so we could do those at our next meeting. Do you have, you say you think you've got, I think I've got some for the western, I think I got two or three I can use in the western part of the county. Most of the work would take care, it's blighted both commercial properties and residential properties. The, so obviously, most of the commercial properties would be in Bloomfield, Linton, Jaysville, Lyons, Willington. I think I've got some people that can take care of those. I need some people to take care of the rural parts of the county. We've got somebody, especially, like I say, in the eastern part of the county, if there's somebody that would be familiar with that. We could use some elected officials here at the courthouse. We elected to do that. I think we can go to them and get whatever information we need. They have plenty on their plate already. I'd really like to get some people out in the community that actually see the properties every day that would, that would come up with some ideas. So if anybody has any ideas or you are interested in participating in that land bank board, contact Commissioner Graves. Commissioner Michael, you have any announcements this morning?
I did not.
Commissioner Graves?
No.
Good. Our next regular public meeting is August the 15th, 9:30 a.m. in this room. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So may I.
Second.